...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and in just this world.
Thank you. I'd like to ask for approval of minutes from December 4th, 2017. Second, on favor.
Hi.
Hi. For selectmen's comments. Let's have a couple of comments today. First is, congratulations to the Daniel Hannan Tigers for their state championship on the football team this year, to go along with the ladies' field hockey and the men's soccer teams that also won the state championship.
Good year.
It's not over. The other thing is, I'd just like to make mention our fireplace is lit. That hasn't been done in a while, and we're going to keep it going every day from now on. So, thank you to Bill for helping us get that thing going.
Mood light, atmosphere for me.
And just today, one other last thing today is the deadline for RFPs for the Academy School Project. I know that we have at least five that we received today, so that's good news. Looking forward to looking at those and seeing what's being offered. All my comments for now. I'm going to open up to citizens' comments. Since we have a lot of people here tonight, I'm going to ask that comments be limited to two minutes, and if they become repetitious, I'm going to ask that we discontinue. Yes?
Susan Glant, 682 Green Hill Road.
Let's use our microphone. Very fancy.
For the viewers at home.
Susan Glant, 682 Green Hill Road. On November 17th, a group of citizens sent a letter to the Board of Selectmen in support of a fracking waste ban with 160 names collected in about an hour and a half. Many of Madison's residents are here today, sorry, here today to express support, again, for fracking waste ban and to ask for public hearings. At this time, I would like to ask all the people who are here in support of this issue to stand up. And just quickly, go around the room, state your name and address as you sit down. And then, there's one other person that has one thing to present. I'll start at one end and just...
Pass the mic down.
Yeah, you can pass the mic.
That's what that went on.
Yes, yes, go ahead.
All right.
Owen Charles, 5 Nichols Hill Drive. Thanks for your time.
Lynn Charles, 5 Nichols Hill Drive.
Mary Nagels, 278 Summer Hill.
Carol Wagner, 15 Bradley Road.
Dan Wagner, 15 Bradley Road.
Eric Fuller, 40 Hodgkins Lane.
Linda Fuller, 40 Hodgkins Lane.
John Leckerling, 19 Grove.
Nancy Leckerling, 19 Grove. And I also have a letter with 54 more signatures that I'd like to give you.
Nancy Ramsay, 63 Stone Road.
Carolyn Kayler, 16 Norwood Avenue.
Elizabeth Colby, 4 Maple Avenue.
Terry Echol, I'm actually with the Interreligious Ecojustice Network. We're working with religious communities in Madison on this issue.
Chris Farmer, 253 Ford Path Road.
Jennifer Lee, 17 Bradley Road.
Tom Lee, 17 Bradley Road.
Walter Lutman, 11 St. Morale Madison.
Ray Ben, 350 Cops Road.
Morandi Family, 246 Durham Road.
John Hennessy, 21 North Lane.
Edward Raff, 81 Flintlock Road.
Virginia Raff, 81 Flintlock Road.
Harry Ryan Howard, 26 Solbon Road.
Matt Parton, 21 Dover Lane. I just want to say, to work in this industry, this is nasty stuff. Fully supportive of that.
Kelly Brady, 108 Genesee Lane.
Fran Brady, same residence.
Bill Cash, 586 Opening Hill Road.
Catherine Lynch, 99 Harbor Avenue. Thank you.
Any other comments? What else? Please pass it back.
I have two issues to talk about tonight. I am glad to see a big turnout because maybe you can give some support to one of the issues that I've brought up before to this Board of Elections. And in talking with Tom, I'm not going to speak for Tom or the Board, but I hope you will support this.
The Board of... Just don't point your mouth. I'm in New York.
For all of you people that are, obviously, all citizens of our wonderful town, I'd like you to know that the Board of Education has not and has no intention of pre-employment, pre-employment drug testing of all Board of Education staff members. And that includes custodians, teachers, administrators. Everybody else that's hired by the Town of Madison goes through pre-employment drug testing. Our children have spent more time in the school system under the care of teachers and administrators and other ancillary people, and I can't for the life of me see why pre-employment drug testing is not done. We're not talking about random drug testing while somebody's employed. That would be the subject of contract negotiations, but there's no reason on this earth for us not to test people prior to coming in. So, I would ask this Board to vote or whatever you need to do to take action, to urge the Board of Education to institute pre-employment drug testing. And any member of the Board that doesn't go along with this, I think should step down because they don't have the children's benefits really at the heart of things. That's number one. Number two, my wife heard this on the news recently, and it may be something good for this town. I know that we all want people to shop locally, especially the downtown merchants or anybody who's a merchant in this town. Now, in New Jersey, they've started a program where you get rebates on your real estate There were debit cards issued, and you can use them at your local merchants. The local merchant pays four cents per transaction. But this is administered by a company that charges the four cents and then passes on the information to the town, so that the more you spend locally, you have a better chance of reducing your property taxes in this town. So, I would ask the Economic Commission and maybe the Board to look into this matter to see if this will, A, help those of us that shop locally and reduce their taxes, and also help the merchants in this town. I thank you for your patience. I urge everybody to think about the Board of Education and that they really have our children's interest at heart.
Any other comments? Hearing none, I'll move along. And number five, presentation and discussion regarding banning fracking waste. Who's, uh, Jen?
Thank you very much for inviting me to give this presentation to your Board. My name is Jennifer Siskin. I'm a volunteer local coordinator with Food and Water Watch, and I have previously sent these slides ahead to the Board to help speed the presentation along. So, if the public is interested in more information, we do have space reserved Sunday afternoon on January 7th at the library, and Mercy by the Sea may also be scheduling an event that we can let you know about. But the first slide is basically where in and around Pennsylvania huge volumes of waste are currently being disposed of. That's what you see with all the yellow flags. Pennsylvania is producing an enormous amount of waste, as you see in the numbers at the bottom of the screen, more than a billion gallons of waste in a single year. And we currently have a state law that is a temporary moratorium, but a mandate to write regulations for this waste in the future. And these are the different types of waste. They come from the drilling process on the top left, the hydraulic fracturing process, which is the moment that they're injecting the wells that they've already dug at a very high pressure with a very large volume, about four to five million gallons of chemical solution. The flowback waste comes back up to the surface after they're done with this process. During the production and processing of the gas, they're producing liquid waste called brine, water, and then this brine is partially cleaned and still used over and over again until it becomes so contaminated that it has to be finally disposed of. We know how toxic this waste is because of naturally occurring toxins that are buried in the ground that mix with the chemical solution once it's injected and all the shale is shattered. This is just a very short list of these naturally occurring toxins and what they can do to the human body. This slide comes to us from the National Council on Radiation Protection. This is a congressionally chartered agency whose mission is to warn the public about radioactive contamination. And this comes from a report that their senior staff scientist wrote specifically on how radioactive materials in fracking waste can harm the public. Part of it is due to the way fracking is now having a much larger exposure to shale where radioactive material exists, and because of that much larger, longer wellbore, you're getting much more radioactive material in the waste after it comes up to the surface. Also, from the National Council on Radiation Protection, we know how this radioactive material travels through the air and the pathways that can bring it into the human body. We also know that contaminated soil and contaminated surface and groundwater can provide pathways for radiation to get inside the human body. And we know how radioactive this waste is. This slide comes to us from the U.S. Geological Survey, which is part of our federal government, and all of these little shapes and colors on this graph are individual wells that have been tested. And then plotted on the graph is the amount of radium, how many pyrocaries per liter the brine coming out of these wells had. We know that radium causes breast cancer, bone cancer, liver cancer. It's associated with both childhood and adult leukemia, and we know how very high levels of radium exist in these wells, as you can see by all of them that have been tested over the years. And then, in addition to the naturally occurring toxins, there's all the chemicals that are being used in the fracturing process. And this infographic comes from a study that was done in 2011. Dr. Theo Colburn was the first person in the country to go to each individual state registry and see what was being voluntarily reported to each state. A list of 649 chemicals that were being voluntarily reported was compiled, but then when the research team went to research what those chemicals can do to the human body, they found that 44% of them had never been researched ever. So, we don't know what 44% of the chemicals can do, whether they cause neurological impairment or cancers or organ damage, we just don't know. But of the 363 that were able to be researched, more than half of them are soluble in water. About a third of them are volatile, meaning they can travel through the air, and the percentage of chemicals that are both soluble and volatile and what they could do to the human body are shown in this infographic. The infographic itself was developed by the Physicians for Social Responsibility in Los Angeles. Since 2011, the number of chemicals that are being voluntarily reported has increased. The latest study from Yale shows more than 1,100 chemicals are being voluntarily reported. This is from a nationwide registry, but the oil and gas industry is allowed to keep what chemicals they use as proprietary rights or trade secrets, so this is just what they're willing to report voluntarily. We don't know how many chemicals are being used that we are not being told about. These other studies have been done since this time period. There is a fourth edition of a compendium put together by the Concerned Health Professionals of New York, and a fifth compendium should be coming out. Typically, they have published them in the November timeframe, so I'm expecting a fifth edition to come out shortly. It's a little bit overdue. But what we're seeing is, especially this study over here, people are now being hospitalized for the medical problems that we know the chemicals can cause to the human body based on this study that was done. And we're seeing this over and over again throughout the country, and this is people who are being exposed in heavily drilled areas and people who are also being exposed where waste is being stored and spilled, unfortunately. Raw waste that comes into Connecticut after regulations are written will be coming to hazardous waste treatment facilities, and you can see the pretty horrendous track record that these three facilities that currently exist in Connecticut have. They've been in violation, either all or most, of the past three years, and the Bridgeport facility has had the most significant violations. This is where they're supposed to be treating waste that they're currently allowed to treat. They're following regulations, but they're not following regulations. When they have a significant violation, they're releasing into the environment chemicals that are way beyond the limit that they're allowed legally to release. And what they do is they release into the sewage systems of the towns that they serve in or sit in, and then any chemicals that come through to those sewage systems, those facilities owned by the town or by a regional group are not equipped to further clean out these chemicals that they're not supposed to receive in the first place. So, it just flows through their sewage system and then ends up, it goes as effluent into surface waters. In Bridgeport, it goes straight into Bridgeport Harbor, and in Meriden and Bristol, it goes into surface waters that eventually lead to the sound.
Jen, can I just ask you a quick question on this slide?
Sure.
Is the, any of the violations or the chemicals that you're talking about here, are they considered fracking waste?
Currently, these facilities are not supposed to be receiving fracking waste, but the definition of fracking waste is very narrow in the state language right now. It only bans a certain process, the hydraulic fracturing process, and there's liquid waste that comes from the production process and the processing of gas. So, technically, that's not illegal to send onto these facilities, so, but our state regulators and our lawmakers believe they've banned hydraulic fracturing. In fact, they've got many loopholes in our current law.
So, you believe that some of these violations are with fracking-related waste materials?
I don't have any information about that. All I know is that we have loopholes in our current law, and the waste that these facilities are currently allowed to treat, they're violating the regulations they're supposed to be following.
Do you know, out of all of these, how many of these are actual releases versus other housekeeping-type of violations?
Anything that's a significant violation should be a release. When I was presenting to the Town of Meriden, they also mentioned that, or actually, in Bristol, this goes up to June 2016, and I believe Bristol has had a significant violation since then. In the Town of Meriden, the, I believe it was that either the town planner or the town manager mentioned during their public hearing that they had hexavalent chromium released at their facility. Hexavalent chromium is the chemical that people became familiar with with the movie Eric Brockovich. So, what you can do, this record comes, their EPA records, they're called ECHO records, and the Rivers Alliance of Connecticut has organized them on their website. You can drill down through several pages and come to their Connecticut Hazardous Waste Treatment Facility Compliance Overview. And then, once you get to that page, you can drill down even further. So, you can click on these blue links that are active on their website and then find what chemicals have been released at what percentage of the levels. So, this is, what we're looking at is a potential contamination for Connecticut. Where you see the asterisks on transport, transfer, the hazmat facilities, POTWs are publicly owned, Treatment Works are more the town-owned wastewater facilities, and BUD permits are where waste is being given a permit to be used for an alternative use. All of these types of handling of waste with the asterisks, we've already seen contamination occurring in other states. So, I really don't see how rules on paper written by DEEP will prevent the same type of contamination from occurring here in Connecticut, which is why I'm so invested as a volunteer. I don't get paid, and there's no skin in the game for me whatsoever on this. But I have family that lives in Pennsylvania, and they've had well sites built close to their homes, and three weeks ago, 63,000 gallons of fracking waste was spilled next to my mother's house. And that was spilled transferring from one storage tank to another. And if this waste gets regulated and brought to Connecticut, we're also going to have storage tanks, and we're going to have transfers from one location to another. So, this same type of contamination can very easily happen here.
If I could just, I want to make sure I understand this.
Sure.
This slide. This is potential. You don't have any information as to whether actually these things are happening. I'm especially looking at the beneficial use. This is a potential as opposed to an actual?
Well, it's potential for Connecticut. So, I don't have any information about whether any waste from fracking has been spilled in Connecticut, but I can tell you that in the state of Pennsylvania, they allowed fracking waste, the solid drill cuttings, to be mixed into construction fill for five years. And before they started this practice, public health advocates and environmental advocates went and testified in public hearing before the Pennsylvania DEP and said, "Do not allow these permits to go forward. You want to turn this down." And PADEP just ignored what was happening and sided with the industry that wanted to mix this solid waste in with construction fill and use as a road base and as a base material underneath well pads that were being built. And this practice was permitted for five years in Pennsylvania until finally they came back and said they weren't going to issue any more permits because they had lack of transparency as far as knowing whether waste had been properly cleaned, I'm assuming, or, you know, but, you know, that's exactly the argument we were telling them five years prior, that towns will have no idea whether any waste brought in from construction fill has been properly cleaned or properly tested for radioactivity.
Thank you.
So, as far as the BUD permits are concerned, the loopholes that exist in our state language right now include construction fill, road base material, ground field capping material, any de-watered salts or brine that spread directly onto roadways is currently covered in the moratorium and that's not allowed to be used presently.
I'm sorry, I'm, excuse me. So, the moratorium bans these or does not ban these?
It bans the liquids on the right as far as being spread on roads. It would ban de-watered salts from being spread on roads, so towns make their own brine from a bag of salts and spread it on roadways. There are some facilities that are de-watering fracking brine and selling the salt off to wholesalers. So, currently, under Connecticut moratorium, you're not allowed to spread any fracking waste on roads for de-icing or dust control or anything like that. However, ground field capping, road base, and construction fill, most of that is solid waste, and our current moratorium doesn't cover any waste in the drilling process. The drilling process happens first. Second process is hydraulic fracturing. Third process is production and processing of the gas is number four. So, our current moratorium only deals with the hydraulic fracturing process or stage two, or anything produced secondarily to the purpose of that process. So, loopholes that currently exist include waste coming from the drilling process, which happens weeks before, or even months or even longer before the hydraulic fracturing process takes place.
So, Jen, the state has taken a position via moratorium on a couple of the solids there, I guess. Where are they with the rest of the processes, though, like transport and stuff, transfer and storage? Has the state taken a position at this point?
Actually, I'll show you a different slide, which explains this a little bit easier. The hydraulic fracturing flowback waste is what comes up to the surface after you've hydraulically fractured. Hydraulically fractured is exactly what it sounds like. You're using a hydro solution or a liquid solution to fracture rock underneath the ground. When they inject that well with very high pressure, when they're done fracturing the rock, they have to release the pressure, and it's almost like letting air out of the balloon. You're going to have waste that flows right up to the surface right away. That could happen for a week or two, and then, once the well starts producing gas, you're now in the production phase. You're no longer in the hydraulic fracturing phase. So, what you're seeing on the left-hand column is because the definitions of what this waste are different, it includes all drilling and extraction processes, all drilling and extraction activities. The local moratoriums that have been passed in all but one town in Connecticut include every type of waste, but the state language only includes the hydraulic fracturing process.
What is the question? Sorry, there's a couple of question marks there. What do those mean?
Because the language in the state law says waste from the hydraulic fracturing process and anything produced secondarily to the purpose of that process, so if they are cleaning off the, cleaning off the surface equipment with chemicals, that would, after they've hydraulically fractured, that if they're actually removing the hydraulic fracturing waste that spills onto the drill sites, then the chemicals that they're using to clean off their drilling rig would be, would probably be considered waste, but that's not clearly defined. It's not really defined what is secondarily produced waste. It just states that. So, you could assume that they're, that they're included, you could put two X's where the question marks are.
This exhibit begs a big question. Why hasn't the state taken care of this? The state is where the expertise lies, not at the town level, and yet this exhibit seems to demonstrate that the state has not viewed this in the way many of these towns have viewed this. So, what's going on? Why isn't the state taking action and looking at all of these line items and deciding what's best for the citizens of the state?
Well, the current Commissioner of DEP, Commissioner Cle, was brand new on the job when this came before committee in 2014, and he testified in committee that he didn't want to see a statewide ban, that he felt that he could write rules that would be the strictest in the nation, and he's since gone on publicly to state, you know, California has good rules, Illinois is developing rules, Colorado has strong rules out of the 26-some-odd states that are allowing fracturing to occur. And he testified that he could write regulations. You know, all of his colleagues in other states are doing the same thing. There's, there hasn't been a state government yet that has banned fracturing waste, but we've had counties ban it, but we haven't had state governments ban it. And I can tell you honestly that there have been key legislators from both parties that have stymied the passage of a ban. It was killed in committee in 2013, then the legislators that wanted this to pass came back in 2014. At that point in time, Governor Malloy was not supporting a ban, and the Speaker of the House wouldn't call the ban language to the floor. So, instead, we had compromise language with the moratorium and the mandate for future DEEP regulations added in, and that's what passed. And then, in 2017, the House attempted to pass a ban, but they passed it with the exact same definitions language that passed in 2014. So, they were going to pass a ban that has the same loopholes that currently exist in the moratorium. In addition to that, the negotiation process on whether they were going to allow this bill to go forward, one of the parties said, you know, "Our starting point..." to go forward, one of the parties said, you know, "Our starting point in negotiating on this bill is, you know, we want the mandate that all the contaminants in this waste be publicly reported, removed from current state law. Unless you're willing to do that, we're not going to support this bill moving out of committee or moving through the legislature." There were several other very good key public health protections that were passed into law in 2014. And when the ban was crafted in 2017 and passed by the House, those key protections were also gutted. So, you know, we had a ban, a weak ban moving forward, but we had a rollback of good protections that existed on the state language. So we're working with legislators to hopefully get a better bill next year. This is what we've seen in other states. As I mentioned, New York State, they've had 15 counties pass bans specifically just for waste. This came after many number of individual municipalities passed their own bans in moratorium. Here you see all of Long Island, two counties, two counties to the west of Connecticut, all of New York City, all five boroughs have a ban on fracking waste. And here's where we are in Connecticut so far. Thirty-three towns have passed bans. Thirty-two of them have used language that was developed by the legal council for Riverkeeper and already passed in counties in New York State. I worked with the First Town Coventry, which was actually the second town to pass, and we adopted this Riverkeeper language. We basically just edited out all the references to New York State statute. And that is what has passed in the 32 towns since the very first town passed. So that's the language that was forwarded to you by citizens and citizens. We have about a dozen towns in various stages of activity. Some towns have it in, they've already had public hearings. It's in committee. Boards of aldermen are reviewing it. I've got presentations at numerous town meetings and public hearings coming up in the future. I just gave a presentation at Rocky Hills Public Hearing and the town council voted immediately following. We've had huge support. Once people understand what the waste is, nobody wants it in their towns. You know, Greenwich brought in contaminated fill about two decades ago and they built their sports fields around their high school with this contaminated fill. And their children played on this contaminated fill for about 20 years before it was discovered that it was contaminated with PCBs and arsenic. Both are carcinogenic.
They've been trying to clean it up for three years now also.
And they've been trying to clean it up for about three or four years. They've already spent $5.6 million and it's estimated they're going to have to spend another $14 million. And, you know, when I was sitting in Milford's waiting to testify in front of the committee, the ordinance committee with Milford, they were talking about how many millions it was going to cost them to dredge like four or five different town ponds of PCB contamination. And, you know, should they start with this pond or this pond, it's going to be more expensive if we go this route versus that route. And basically radioactive and chemically toxic fracking waste is the PCB contamination of our time. We are sending out so much of this waste, it's being spilled and leaked through accidents and employee error and equipment failure. And we're developing a radioactive legacy across the country wherever it's being spilled and I'm trying to prevent that from happening in Connecticut.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, item number six, presentation and discussion on geothermal upgrades at Town Campus. Woody decide to do or is that Phil?
Well, I'm, yeah.
Tech team.
I'll start because I'll say the least. So geothermal is new to us. I think it's an exciting area that we're going into. It's not our traditional.
Oh, thank you.
It helps for them.
Oh, that's working. Phil McMinn, I'm the facilities director for the Town of Mass and Mass Public Schools. And we are looking at geothermal here for this facility. We are going outside our traditional energy normal, cooling and operating systems and we're looking at geothermal. I think it's something that we've been looking at for a while, something that I think is a long-term investment for a big game. Woody and part of the other energy committee people have been helping us, you know, look at energy savings for a lot of projects in the town and the schools and to help me investigate the geothermal. We hired an expert and you have the report. And now we're here to answer questions and go over it a little more again. I'm going to turn it over to Woody. I think he's much more familiar with details and can answer any questions you may have and maybe also say thermal fully.
Thank you, Woody Weiss, Chair Energy and Efficiency Committee. Besides the energy efficiency that the geothermal really should be called a ground source heat pump system offers, it doesn't burn any fossil fuel in its operation. So it's extremely clean, the equipment is located indoors, the wells are obviously outdoors but sealed with a 50-year warranty. So the equipment upgrades a lot more slowly than roof mounted units, outdoor mounted units, gas boilers that get hot, rust and fail at times. So it's a system that has a much longer useful lifetime than other systems. And in the analysis that John Zein did that you have in front of you, and he mentions that this is long-lived equipment, but I think it's important to note that his projection of approximately 10-year payback doesn't take into account the fact that this system lasts probably twice as long as a system, an alternative system like the gas boiler and conventional air conditioning would. And the wells, which are an extremely costly part of the ground source heat pump installation, wells are warranted for 50 years. This is a system we're not going to be replacing parts on for a very long time.
Can you just clarify what that very long time is?
Well, 50 years on the wells.
On the wells. The mechanical part?
The mechanical parts are the heat pumps. And the heat pumps operate much more efficiently than air source heat pumps because they're waterproof. So they don't get as warm, the seals don't dry out as much. We don't really, you know, there's no warranty on them that goes that long, but they are warranted for 10 years, which is twice as long as anything a life stuff you would purchase. But frankly, they last an awful lot longer than that. Especially those that are mounted indoors, which ours would be, in the attic where the current ones are. So they're not going to get rusty, they're not going to get eaten by the wiring, eaten by mice, looking for the cones in the winter. So they tend to last a very long time.
So the payback timeline is 25 years.
The payback is 10 years and everything.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The analysis was done on a payback over 25 years.
On how much extra you would save. The actual payback to break even between the cost differential between a conventional system and a ground source heat pump system is 10 years according to John. However, Bill and I have been discussing this, it's actually less than 10. There's a contingency, you may have noticed, a 10% in the ground source heat pump system. There's no contingency in the conventional. We've discussed the cost of the conventional and we both feel that it's, it would be more expensive priced in 2010 with inflationary numbers added to it. But the added numbers don't equal what it would really cost us should we go that route. So in our opinion, the payback is under 10 years.
So I'm sorry, let me sort of rephrase it. I'm inferring from the numbers that are done on a 25-year timeframe that that's the life expectancy of the equipment. Is that not accurate? Should I not be doing that?
Well, for sure, the wells are guaranteed for 50 years. The heat pumps on the chemical. So I don't know why John chose 25 years as the asking app, but, you know, if you assumed 23, 25-year life on the heat pumps, I don't think you'd be far off.
Okay.
That would be double what we get typically out of normal air source heat pumps, which is a regular air conditioning system. So I think that's probably reasonable, maybe with 30 years. But by then, we'll have saved so much money that I think we'd be, we'd be 25 is reasonable.
A quick question. The payback of 10 years, does that take into account the fact that we're not making the investment in the other equipment? Because I mean, if you look at our CIP, we have the geothermal in for year one, year two, or you want to call it. And then a year later, we're replacing the cooling tower. Two years later, we're replacing the boiler. And those are, you know, fairly big numbers. They're over $100,000 each.
Those would come off.
The cooling tower would be like $128,000.
Yeah, a cooling tower.
Couldn't we really look at that as part of the, towards the payback?
Well, we, in the 10-year payback, we need those numbers.
We did.
I was very much likely to remove them a second time. No, we also estimated the amount of electricity. This building, the Arts Barn, Town Campus, are all on one electric meter. And we estimated that this building utilizes 70% of the electricity. Since we made that estimation, which turns out to not be too far off, we put monitoring equipment in that gives us exactly what it is. It happens to be 72% of the kilowatt hours, the consumption, but 79% of the demand, kilowatt demand, which means that it's actually going to reduce, just that number alone will reduce the 10 years. So we're guessing it's going to be more like eight years, somewhere, somewhere in that range. It's really hard unless you get a hard pull on this, but we think it's an under 10-year payback for a system with a long life that, you know, has a warranty on the wells, which is a $200,000 part of the investment of 50 years.
I think also the key in my mind is that we're looking at alternative energy and, you know, ground source heat. I mean, we were doing the solar. I'm a facility guy. The solar and these kind of equipment are new to us and, you know, cause more issues with the facilities. But they're the right thing to do, I think, for the long-term commitment for what we're doing. So I mean, that's to me, the other side of it, not just the facility side or the 10-year payback or is it an eight-year payback? Are we doing what we think is the right thing for our facilities in the long term and the impact on the environment?
The payback calculations rely on 16 cents a kilowatt hour. Are we really paying that?
With demand, absolutely.
Wow. Paying, I'm paying less than half of that at home.
No, that's for the generation portion.
Oh, you're doing the all-in?
First of all, residential and commercial are invoiced by EverSource completely different. Residentially, you're not charged for demand. You're only charged for kilowatt hours. There's a delivery portion and a generation portion. They're about equal. So eight cents, eight cents, nine cents, nine cents. Commercially, and we're classed as commercial, we pay for all but the smallest of our buildings, we pay a generation rate, which is in the eight, nine cents range, and we pay a delivery rate, which is about 85% of that portion is demand. So it's not a matter of what your consumption and kilowatt hours are, it's a matter of what you're requesting at any given time, 15 minutes.
15 minutes of demand.
Yep, that's demand. And I sent you the EverSource rate request. There's a rate request that just went in. Did you see that, Tom? It's going to be, well, it's 40% in some cases. Some of our buildings are going to see tremendous increases in the delivery portion of their bill. And this has been predicted by Tom Latour, our energy consultant, for three years, that as they replace aging infrastructure parts, our delivery portion is going to become more significant and higher by a lot than our generation portion. So everything that we can do to reduce electric consumption and demand will save money over the long run. And these systems will. The ground source heat pump systems are super efficient.
Woody, what does the future look like for generation and demand charges?
Well, demand we know is skyrocketing. Generation depends really at this point on natural gas prices as the utilities convert to so many natural gas plants.
Any reason to believe the trend would not be upward?
Only if you're ill informed.
Woody, any sense on just year one operating costs? What type of benefit are we going to see immediately?
With the ground source heat pump?
Yeah.
My guess is over what we have now.
Yep.
Forty thousand a year for this building alone.
So it's considerable.
Oh, it certainly is.
Yeah.
Where in the, where in all of this does it, does it show that? Because this had all-in maintenance, operating costs.
This is comparing it to a high-efficiency gas and high-efficiency heat pump cooling system.
Which is not what we have.
Which is partially what we have. So Scott's, the answer to Scott's question is how much will we save over what we're currently paying?
Right.
About 40. How much will we pay, will we save over if we spent, say, $300,000 rather than $400,000 and we put in a new gas boiler and high-efficiency pumps and a brand-new cooling tower, which only lasts 20 years and then costs $125,000 today dollars to replace, which then makes that system more expensive than a ground source heat pump. So I can't imagine how we'd do that. But if we did, then it would only be about $25,000, $20,000 savings over that system.
So the table that was used to calculate the break even and then the long-term savings has it at $13,000 a year savings over what we've got?
Not over what we've got.
Then what?
Where are you?
I am on this page. They did not number it. They weren't doing any pay.
It is the last page.
I could, I probably could have given you that. So this is the table that illustrates the 10-year break even. It's calculating an annual savings of $13,000 a year. 10 years, we would have accumulated $135,000 savings, which is the differential between the better system and a like system.
That's why it's 10 years.
Right. So I understand that math of, it's the delta that we're really trying to recover.
Right, because we have to do something.
We have to do something. So it's not, it's not, it's not anything near $40,000 a year.
Forty thousand would be if we compared it to what we currently have, which I think was Scott's question.
Correct.
We're paying, we're paying 68 or 69,000, something, something like that.
Okay, then what's in this table? What?
This table is the high-efficiency, new gas boiler with.
We're upgrading everything.
And a new cooling tower.
Okay.
If we did that.
Okay.
To try to justify which way do we want to go for the future? Because we're at end of life anyway, so which system do we want to go to?
Okay, I think I understand now. I think I understand. Did we do any sort of, well, can we replace the system with what we've got today or is, or is our only choice one of these two systems?
We would replace it.
Well, this system that you've got is similar to the gas boiler, heat pump, cooling tower system. The difference would be that today we would use a condensing boiler, which is more efficient than just a cast iron boiler that we have now. And we would use newer compressor technologies.
So incremental increases in technology, not a different?
We couldn't buy the older one anyway. So to replace it with what we had in kind, but modernized, it would be that $267,000 price, which I don't, Phil and I don't, don't think that's reasonable. The cooling tower alone is other country. So we don't think that that number, which was just taken by using the study that CES did for us in 2010 and adding inflation, as opposed to going out pricing, which, you know, that wasn't part of the study that we did. So we think the 267 is light by 30 grand maybe, maybe a little more, which would make the payback a little better versus 400 for a ground source heat pump system that's going to live twice as long and save us money running it. So that's, that's really the two comparisons.
Are the numbers that we have in the CIP right now, so the 555 for the heat pump here at Town Campus and then the 327 for the Arts Barn, those, the current numbers at this point?
So go over those again?
I have 555, 063 for here, Town Campus, and 367, 200.
Your, your spreadsheet?
Yeah, 2018, 2019.
I can answer that, but the number you're. The number you're quoting includes the commissioning, which is separate from the cost of installing the equipment and getting it running, and also any engineering studies and other studies that are.
So it's inclusive of everything?
It's everything.
Yeah.
It's a total all-in number.
Yes, the 55, yes.
And, and my guess is we'll, we'll do better on the Arts Barn, because the system's quite a bit smaller.
And then, and 403 was what was used for these calculations?
Correct.
So.
There's missing a bunch of pieces.
Well, we're going to cost of install, the cost of install, not total all-in, total all-in. Because those are the engineering, giving all that data, very similar numbers. So John used the cost of installation of the system in both cases.
Okay, and I'm just trying to get to apples to apples here, that's all. I just, so the 555 has engineering costs in it that we're going to incur either way?
Exactly, and commissioning that we're going to incur either way.
Okay, so net of all of those expenses that we have, regardless of the path we take, it's 403 versus 267?
Correct.
Okay.
Except that the 267 isn't real, but that's, but yes, we're not inserting that.
Bruce and Scott is our representative to CIP. This is on our agenda tonight here because of.
We want, we, CIP had asked us to flesh out these numbers and do this analysis, so we wanted to.
So we hadn't heard really much about it, and we, I think the last time we didn't have the financial packet to, as a selectman.
I notice we're not taking any action tonight, but are we trying to give a sense to you folks that we would like?
I think support, yeah, I think certainly support from, from fellow selectmen would be helpful to understand in terms of the process. I mean, ultimately, in CIP, reconcile against all the other town priorities. I mean, this is, you know, Thomas passed this as one of his priorities, so we're there representing our.
So you know where I'm feeling about it?
We know where you're feeling about it.
Well, Tom, this seems to me like an obvious thing that we should encourage, going to save a ton of money over a long period of time.
Well, and, and so, just, and I apologize for cutting you off. I guess like, what I'm, what's still missing for me in all of this is the model assumes both systems work as-is without any replacement for 25 years. And, and I think that's not a reasonable expectation.
I don't think any of our analyses of replacement systems take that into account. Even if you want, you're on an offhand guess, the ground source heat pump components will last a lot longer than the air source components will, and a lot longer than boiler will without the need for replacements. But that's, that's just, you know, guessing. But it's really, I say it's guessing, the wells are half the cost, they have a 15-year warranty.
Right, this says that our cumulative investment over 25 years in the system is $136,000.
Well, not, well, we don't include maintenance. I mean, replacement of, of parts that are out of warranty and things like that, that's, that's, who knows? Anything I gave you there would be just shooting from the head. I mean, it really would be. I think the one thing that I can tell you is that the ground source heat pump system will be more reliable and require less maintenance, because the.
Save 40K a year, is what you're saying, right?
Well, not only that, but, but with the warranty on the wells, the most costly part of the system individually is warranty. Whereas we have no warranty, you know, boiler warranty is not very long, and heat pump warranties are five or 10 years. So you're not dealing with low warranties. The cooling tower is tremendous maintenance. I think you have a better idea than that.
So in, it, it's spring and fall, it's always a problem, you know, to transfer from heat to cool, it's always an issue. And it is definitely a maintenance problem down the back, but we fix it and repair it just like we do everything else. So I think the, the point is, reliability, I think, is one. The comfort level's going to be, we're hoping to be better. I think it's a long-term investment.
Any other questions? Okay.
Tom, I'd like to go back to number five. We had our presentation on fracking, but we didn't have our discussion. And I for one, just want to review what the next steps might be for us.
Well, we have not unchained gen from the desks. I'd be happy to go back if you wanted to.
Well, I'd, I'd like us to identify what we think our next step is aboard a selectman.
Should we just finish the, are we done with the topic that we were just on?
No, I'm sorry, I thought we were.
Are we, are we all good with, so are you guys expressing your support then?
I am, yeah.
Didn't we have Dean on the line? Do we have Dean's support as well?
Yes, yes.
You know, and, and I guess I just want to be clear, as we go back into CIP, Bruce can speak to this as well, you know, we're, we're, we're looking at this in the context of all of the other priorities in town as well, and trying to come up with a budget that makes sense. So, you know, there's obviously no guarantees in any of this, but, you know, we're obviously representing the priorities, so thank you. That's helpful.
Okay. Anyway, going back to your point about the discussion, tonight we had the presentation to, you know, get their story that they wanted to tell. I spoke with Senator Kennedy's office, he's going to come to a subsequent meeting of ours to address the issue from a legislative's point of view. He's the head of the environmental community.
Yeah.
So I think that our next step is to hear from him and see what guidance he should offer relative to what the state's doing, what, you know, what other towns are doing.
Will Noreen be joining you?
Yes.
Okay, so we have some more information to gather about what's going on at the state level, and then we can have our discussion about what should go on at the town level.
So I had a hard time hearing a little bit of what you were saying. So, so are we expecting then, are we going to have a conversation with Noreen about sort of the state plan and kind of where we're seeing this going?
Well, in Ted, 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 yeah, Ted's really giving authority on this.
Yes, yes.
Hopefully.
Yeah, perfect. That's helpful.
And I think, you know, you know, my, I think where I want to tread gently on all of this is that we don't do something as a town that's in conflict with what the state is doing. As, as you mentioned, the, the, they, the state has many, many more resources to, to do this than we do. And, you know, as you illustrated with, with some of these hazardous waste companies, we're not an island. So we can pass the best thing in the world, and if one of our neighbors upstream doesn't, we're going to be open to sources of pollution that we really have no control over. The other practical issues are, how do we handle the, the transport of materials through the town? Can we?
You cannot ban transportation because of federal interstate commerce laws. The state legislature, I don't know who requested it, but beginning of December 2017, they put that request to the Office of Legislative Research, NFH came out, and I've been going by the information that you cannot ban it, there's something you can do. But the ordinance language does not ban transport, it only bans handling and application and storage. So with regards to what the state's going to do, we really won't know until the legislative session ends, we're getting to choose, because all the way through the session, things can change, and amendments could be offered by the House and the Senate, so.
The other practical problem is the beneficial use designations and, and how to regulate those. Actually, regulating them is easy, you just ban them, right? It's, how do you police that? That's, that's the trick. So I don't think there's much debate that, that, I mean, I'll go on and say, I don't think that town processing or using this type of waste or any type of hazardous waste is a good idea, and we shouldn't be allowing it. The, the trick is, how do we get in the business of policing it if we have to? If, if we feel we need to backstock state legislation, how do we do that effectively in a way that we can manage? So.
The best way, actually, once the state regulates it, you won't be able to enact any type of additional regulation. Your only option will be to have a town ban. We do have that authority, Connecticut statute 7-148 gives towns that authority to ban something that's at risk of public health, and there's also about three or four clauses that deal specifically with waste. I was taking a look at Madison's regulate, your zoning regulations, and your light industrial zone allows concrete facilities, and there was a couple, there were two other items in your light industrial zone. Currently, your concrete facilities in town are making high-quality concrete tile for homes and businesses. But say one of them goes out of business and somebody else decides to move in and process the leftover sand that gets separated out of fracking waste into some sort of concrete aber. Your zoning regulations in your town currently allow that. So unless you've created an ordinance that bans fracking waste, you won't have any control whether somebody comes in and decides to build something in, in that particular zone in your town. So there are, there are two other items regarding your light industrial zoning regs that stuck out in my mind, but I'm sorry, I have to call them. I can forward that to you.
Yeah, which brings up the other great point, is that P&amp;Z has got to be involved in this discussion as well, to, to identify those areas that might be used, and then how to, how to address that, that potential use through, through regulations. I think, you know, the thing that you're bringing up is also another scary thing that I'm not sure how we manage, and that is raw materials two or three times removed from the actual activity. Materials that have been processed and maybe even reprocessed, and, and how do we know, and maybe diluted into, mixed with, how do we, you know, how do we regulate that?
Right.
Right? And so, I mean, they're unanswered questions. I, they're, they're things that we just have to, to, to be careful of and, and make sure that we're addressing, either by relying on state law or by putting it into a place where there are on ordinance.
This is obviously pending, you know, further conversations with our state senator and state rep, but, but at the end of the day, you know, it certainly seems reasonable that we might consider this. You know, I certainly personally support it, but, you know, I think we need to get smarter on it first and, and better understand the impacts, so.
And then to sort of go even deeper into the rabbit hole, is this too narrow a focus? Is, is this, are we looking at this with blinders on? Should we be broadening our horizon in hazardous material handling to a broader category or, or different types of hazardous materials?
Well, the difference is, I know of no other industry that's producing millions of gallons of waste currently, and should they get out to other states because they can't handle it in the state that they're currently drilling in? So because it's kind of clear and imminent danger, we have all the studies that's being sent around, we have loopholes in our moratoria, that's why it's an immediate issue. But your, as far as enforcement is concerned, most towns recognize that enforcement will take place if suspicious activity is noted. And, you know, similar to somebody who wants to dump something in a wooded area in your town, people are going to get away with it even though you have dumping laws. Unless it's noted, they're going to get away with it. You know, people are going to speed, and unless there's a cop there with a, a speed tracker, a radar gun, they're going to get away with it. So deciding not to pass an ordinance because you, you won't be able to enforce all the use of this, I would just recommend that you follow the same type of logic that you have for other, for other laws of town.
Well, this just sounds like proactive health management, too. I mean, we're, we're thinking about the health of our, our residents here in town, so. Do we have a sense, Tom?
And property values.
Yeah, property values, for sure.
Property values are huge, and remediation costs to your town budget.
Yeah. Have we consulted our health director? Has Trent been involved in any of these conversations, or should he be?
Yes, we could, certainly, excuse me, certainly could, just sort of think on that.
So to your question, how could be the next steps for this town, that's what I was asking?
Well, it sounds like we have Noreen and Ted as, as a next conversation for us, and maybe the health, health director as well. Do we need to get them together with P&amp;Z, or how does that, how does, how does the interaction with P&amp;Z need to work?
Well, that's, they have their own hearing.
Well, we have a planning meeting in two weeks, from Thursday, and we can put it on our agenda for a discussion.
Okay. Yeah, just for discussion.
Yeah.
Perfect.
That's helpful.
Thank you.
Adam, seven, discussion additional HVAC work with the library building committee. So what are you, do you have anything new to add? Because I don't want to turn, turn on the television.
Yeah, we are in the midst. First, I have two hats, so I have to tell which hat I'm wearing. As a member of the library building committee, you know, we're finishing, sorry, what's on, the schematic design phase, and just looking at the building, looking at the program, what, what does it have to do with? And for that purpose, costed into the schematic design is a base heating and air conditioning system that meets current codes, no more. And, and that's sort of where we are. Now, switching hats to energy and efficiency, where my effort is wholly placed on saving the town money, which is different than the library. The town is, as we talked about before, pays 85% of the operating budget. I'd like to see options available to us to investigate more efficient systems, and there are two or three things we're looking at. And if it can be cost justified based on payback, that it will save the town money, since the town pays so much of the operating budget. I'd like that money earmarked or bookmarked, or however you put it, we can see IP, so that when the time comes, we're a few months off from that, you know that we switched architects. So we've kind of redesigned a lot of the library project around the cost-saving that this new architect has brought to us. So I don't have firm figures, but you and I talked about, you know, you asked me, what are we talking about in terms of money? I think that looking, kind of making the formula go backwards, looking at what the operating expenses at the library are today, and then projecting what the new addition would add to that, using base equipment, and then saying, what can a more efficient system be? And there are several different types that we're looking at. It would seem to me that to come up with a payback that's acceptable, we would be talking about increasing the cost of the HVAC equipment by, by 250,000 or less, because that could be justified. In other words, if we save 25,000 a year running it, we have a 10-year payback. So it's just simple math worked backwards. And obviously, if we can't come up with numbers that are hard and back-draw, then we would spend nothing on it. But if we can, then over the course of the lifetime of a building that has a very, very long life, it would make sense to at least consider something like this to save all of us the money in running the line. So that's where we are now. Wednesday, there's a meeting with the, and people, the Canada Electrical Plumbing, and I'll be there, and we're going to go over some of the options and take some wild guesses for what these systems cost and what they'll save. But I won't have anything firm really until it's dissolved, so I think we're looking at another couple months, month and a half, something like that.
So you should know, the CIP met and said pretty, pretty emphatically that it, it wouldn't have the ability to consider a request after December 31st. So I think if the library thinks it needs to make a request for money that's in excess of the, of the bond, that it really needs to have those numbers before the 31st in order to be considered in this cycle.
Well, naturally, I won't have numbers by 31st. And two, if we don't consider it in this cycle, then it, it really won't happen, because we're going to be building, building. So there's no redoing this.
So there's no possible way that in the $9 million bond, this system can't be accommodated?
In, in my opinion, it's going to require a little bit of additional cutting in certain areas. areas. So I would imagine that it would be impossible to include something above the base system and still hit that number. The architect has reduced the square footage, found some ways to save money in terms of construction with underfilling, things that Bill can explain to me sometime about the foundation. That's been done, but we're starting to really hit the walls about what this, you know, what this is going to cost. So my guess is there's not going to be enough to do that as part of the budget. And again, I'm coming to you with the energy and efficiency hat, not the library building committee hat. I want to see us pay less to run this building over the next 50 years, not more. I don't want, because otherwise, somewhere, somebody's going to have to come up with an extra 30, 40 a year, thousand, to run your building. And I don't know if anybody's put that into next year's budget, but you'll have to, because the way it looks to me now, the $40,000 spent per year on the library HVAC right now, it's going to go to 60, 70, 80, some number like that. Because we're having more square footage than the current library, so even if the building's, you know, a little bit better, you're still close to, you know, a number like that. And I'd like to see it go down for my taxes and everybody else's to get that number down, even though it means we're spending a little bit more to get a better system. It'll also be a system that's more comfortable for people, it's a more modern system.
I mean, everything you're saying makes perfect sense, but we'll be voting on a budget in its final form as this group in the beginning of February. I mean, the budget season is going to march on regardless of the, how good or not good this system is.
Well, Woody's come to us twice now and said that the max that he could see us spending is $250,000. So I guess, what is the harm in us putting, you know, we've got a placeholder in there right now. What would be the harm in us putting in the $250,000 as a placeholder? Sure, they could fill out the little form like everybody else did. But put the $250,000 in there, and then let's have a conversation, they contact the CIP, and decide whether or not the system is merited or not.
Scott, it pushes it down into CIP, I guess, is the point.
That idea makes sense to me, and I respect the CIP process, and I hate to tamper with it, but what we have is we're in the middle of the design of a building. And as Woody has pointed out to us, if we are held rigidly to the existing cycle, this will not happen. And to me, Woody, I know you're sticking your neck out, throwing a number at us, but I would like CIP to run even with your number, just so it becomes part of the discussion for this cycle. Because I think, Bruce, as you pointed out, if it doesn't get into this cycle, and Woody's reminded us, it won't get into the building at all.
So I'd like to refrain that and say that in a $15 million building budget, it seems like finding $250,000 for the HVAC system would be reasonable. And that's, we're not talking about just the $9 million from the town.
May I count on you to join us at the building committee and perhaps find that toothbrush?
I'd be happy to show up and help if I can. I'm not saying that.
I'm telling you.
I mean, if this was a $3 million need.
We've paid two months' days to go through this thing, and you do know that we were two and a half million over on the building that was given to the committee to design. And we're now five or 600,000 over, something like that. So we're still chipping away. We're not below the number looking to spend. So I've been a lone voice in this thing, and I know that you've been super supportive when you've come. People want to see this building get built, and every time I come into the meeting room, I say, I want to see it get built with a better system. And they go, oh, right, go ahead. And I don't know where this money would come from, but I just don't think it's in the budget. And again, if it turns out that it is, or if it turns out that we don't need that to get where we want to be, I understand it. The system they're talking about now will litter the new roof with HVAC equipment. I planned to put 40,000 to 45,000 kilowatts of PD up at no upfront cost, using the same PPA arrangement that we have for other buildings in town. Now seven are operational in that new system. And generate our electricity from the sun. If they pox marked it full stop up there, you know, that goes away. So I'm desperately trying to figure out a way to make this thing less costly to run. And, but I can't give you hard numbers, I would just be guessing. But I do know that it won't be more than that no matter what, because more than that couldn't be justified by a reasonable payback. So by working the number backwards, I'm confident it won't be more. Could be less.
And the other thing I'd like to add to that is that the project does not have step one going out and sourcing the HVAC system. So at least in these early months or a year or so of the project, you don't need a commitment on this system.
Well, if you're going to drill wells and you're going to be building a building.
No, we're not even talking about wells, but we're talking about different systems requiring different designs.
Spaces and different spaces.
I've been told by the architect that we need to make a decision fairly quickly, you know, whether it's going to be a centralized air handler with ductwork versus individual air handlers throughout the building with just water lines or refrigerant lines, it makes a totally different design for the building. So we can't wait. We can wait to decide whether we want a certain efficiency air compressor, I mean, air conditioning compressor, but that's not going to change the way the overall system operates. It's going to be a designed system. And the engineering that goes into electrical and mechanical and plumbing, that all happens as soon as we release schematic design, which is only a week or two away. So all that design, it begins to happen. So if we put it off for a year, we're not going to be able to do it.
And honestly, the capital budget is not our only avenue. If this is truly worthy, and this is something that people really want, there is always a special appropriation. So, you know, there are avenues to go, although I'm skeptical that.
I'm not sure that's a viable option for us at this point, just based on what I'm hearing about special appropriations. So I think, I hear your point, but I'm not sure that's, I'm not sure that's something.
Well, everybody's willing to approve a special appropriation, and the special appropriation as a route to do something like this are two different things.
Indeed.
Woody, you've had great success in finding third-party folks to put up the solar panels and pay for the initial capital cost of that. Any chance you can find a third-party person to finance this particular?
More pressure, I think.
I don't feel any pressure. You know, when you generate electricity and you're running it through a meter, it's very simple to charge.
Right.
I think that this will cost us 10 cents a kilowatt hour. If you do 1,000 kilowatt hours, you get a bill for 100 bucks. Increasing the efficiency of a heating and air conditioning system is not something I'm aware of any third-party financing.
I'm just concerned that if we don't consider this, and CIP doesn't have an opportunity to talk about it, we're being very short-sighted here with our design of our building. And I totally hear your point on, you know, designing it into spec, but just in hearing, you know, I'm the liaison to the library building committee, hearing just the trials and tribulations of what they've gone through with respect to the former architect, to the current architect, and where they are in the process, I frankly just think it's unreasonable at this point to think that they're going to squeeze more dollars out of the current design. I just don't think it's, it's not where they are in the process right now.
So what terrifies me about that is that in every project we do, there's a contingency of 10%. That's a million and a half dollars in contingency. And we haven't started, and there isn't $250,000 to find, what kind of contingency money is it? And Woody, you're not the guy to answer that question. I'm not putting you on the spot. I'm just asking the, you know, question out loud.
And we should probably have the building committee here at some, have a conversation in fairness.
I think to be fair, yes, we should, because you make the mistake of showing up for these meetings, and then.
And then we're on the jiffy.
Our listeners are on the jiffy.
But.
You know what happened to the messenger?
I'm strong.
But I am grateful for all the information you've given us. I truly am. And I'm not, Gus, I'm not shooting the messenger.
No.
You're shooting the guy who says I'm shooting the messenger.
So I know this topic is just up for discussion, but how do we move to a outcome here that at least CIP can discuss? Because right now, it's TBD, and TBD as of 12/31 goes poof, so.
Well, we're not voting here today.
We can open the agenda and vote for it.
I would, I'd like to see us take Woody's best guess and put that in as the number for CIP to consider.
We can take things under advisement safely.
We can bring it back, for sure, but how do we, do we need to formally, we've set the TBD already to, we've set the TBD already to CIP, so in theory, they could come to CIP with a number.
Yeah.
Right? Wednesday night? Wednesday morning?
Is Gene asking to be recognized?
Yeah. I think, and again, the planning is up to your board.
Jane Fitzgerald in the corner, Board of Finance.
My concern is really what Bruce said about the timeline. We have other projects in town that have also come in as to be determined, and we just can't go beyond that because it affects the operational budget. So I appreciate the fact that it can't go past the year, but we've had other projects, major projects come to the CIP without a number. And if we let you go beyond it, then we have to let them go beyond it, and then our capital budget is all just, I guess, and I'm not sure that that's fair to the taxpayers. So like, really, I think the timeline would be, the Board of Finance is big as concern. I agree.
Right, but if I look at even just the forms that the CIP has to fill out, or that the, I guess it's the department chairs that have to fill out, right? So the library committee, or Beth Crowley, would have to fill out a single form and just write $250,000, or $250,000, sorry.
Well, you have to have, you have to.
It'd be backup material. And you need some backup material.
Right. And again, as Bruce says, it's December 30th, you know, December, whatever, we said that would, really, it should have been, I mean, the projects are supposed to come to State Development by July 1st.
July 1st.
November. I mean, we are so far behind the April at this point. I just, I think it would be very tough and unfair to put numbers forward.
The only point I would make, Gene, and I totally hear you, is that we've been tasked with building a building, which is going to get started next fall, and going to get designed starting in two or three weeks. It's not like we put in for even, you know, a boiler replacement that could get pushed off a year, and while we would not like to see that, we can handle it. In a case like this, we're building it, and it's over.
Right.
There's no redo. So to lose the advantage of an efficient system that will save us money for many, many, many years to come because of that technicality strikes me as penny-wise, pound foolish for us as town residents.
Right, I hear you. I think, I think it's more than technicality. I think it's the budget process, and I think that's the problem, is that the numbers affect other people's projects that are going in. And I think we have to be consistent, that if there's a date, there's a date, and there's a reason for that date, so that it can be vetted through the CIP, it can be vetted through the two boards, it can go to the public. I mean, there's a timeline that has to be met. And I don't think, and I agree with what you're saying, that the taxpayers, but I think in fairness to the taxpayers, they have to have time to look at the projects and the budget and the impact it has.
But no money would be committed, I mean, it could be on the CIP, and then we would come forward as a committee, bring you the documentation that would verify that this is a reasonable thing to discuss, or this is not a reasonable thing, we're withdrawing that. So we still have time to vet it in a way that's fair to the taxpayers. You know, I understand the process, and if you say we can't do that, then I understand, and that'll be that. It just kills me to walk away from building the building properly and, you know.
Well, and long-term operational efficiency.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
And, you know, we've done that, I don't, the senior center was built that way. And it's how many years old, five? Five years old? And so Ellie and I have been working through that building. We've replaced the interior lighting at a cost to the taxpayer. We've just finished as of today doing the exterior lighting. We're looking at other things with the building. HVAC can't be changed in five years. But if we don't do this building correctly, we don't build that many buildings. It's probably the only building we're building in the next couple of years on the CIP. Let's at least put in the correct heating and air conditioning system to minimize what the cost to our taxpayers will be. And we're giving you a max, and we won't spend a dime of it if it doesn't make sense. We're not looking for a lack of control on that.
Yeah, I hear you, Woody. Right, I hear you. I just think that we have other groups in town that are in the same situation, and we've already told them if you don't get it in by the deadline.
Okay, so I think what we need to do is, I think the points were made, there's got to be a number by December 31st.
I'll work with you.
CIP, can we work it out, Woody, whatever? You know, I think we need to move on, because we're making the same points over and over again.
Woody, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, bottom line, I think.
You should give it to Dave.
Let's thank Woody, though, for all his work that he's been doing, my goodness. I mean, this is, it's impressive. Thank you.
Call Ellen and tell her.
I will.
Hey, Tom.
Yeah?
Can we have Peter out here? And they've been waiting very patiently, they've been an hour. I don't know if you want to interrupt, do that now?
Which topic are we talking about?
It's up to you.
What is, what topic?
This isn't a topic. It's your fundraiser that you're doing tonight. That we emailed about a few weeks ago.
Tell them to do it.
Do we do it now?
Is this going to involve pie?
Yeah, this is a pie.
Oh, geez.
I forgot about that.
Well, if we could have gotten this talking done quicker, we would have done by now.
So I'm going to get a pie in the face then I'm coming back to the meeting? We're all getting pies in the face. You're getting one, too.
Oh, no, I'm not.
I heard Jane Fitzgerald is getting a pie in the face.
I wasn't going to read you this. We're already freezing.
Well, I saw a couple of them.
Maybe, take them back. Thanks.
It should have been a surprise.
I'm surprised. I'm surprised.
They wanted it in the hallway.
The beauty of having.
Are they ready?
We're journeying to the hallway.
I think four elected officials by the name of Gus Morvath are also.
What are we doing?
Oh, come on, come on, come on, come on. We're getting a pie in the face.
We're journeying.
You're going to like it, I promise you.
Right here, we're getting a pie in the face.
I've got to have a conversation with Woody.
No, no, no.
We're journeying to the hallway.
So who's doing the first pie?
Well, he's going to say, I'm willing to take the pie in the face.
So Tom's going to do the first one.
Say, say, we're willing to take the pie.
What order are you speaking?
Oh, yeah.
But he's going to say that.
So I'm going to say.
We're going to each go.
We'll lose ourselves first.
You're saying, so we're.
Just like a meeting finished after that, right? It's always have kids.
Then you can smash him in the face.
You're going me, and I'm doing you.
So who's going first?
And you're going last.
And I'll get the last.
Okay, so you're, so you're doing the first pie? You're throwing the first one at him.
I'm, no, I'm charity. You're going to read?
Okay.
I'm going to read.
Yeah.
He's going to read. I'm going to smash him in the face.
Okay.
Tom's going to finish.
Okay. So who's doing the second pie?
No, no, no. I smash him.
He smashes you.
You smash him, and he smashes me.
Okay.
All right? And then, and then you read the last, if you can still see.
Hurry up, because it melts.
Ready?
So you ready, you guys ready to go?
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Tom Banish.
We're doing four takes on this?
No, we're doing one.
When you're ready.
Hi, I'm Tom Banish, I'm first selectman here in Madison.
Hi, I'm Scott Murphy, one of the other selectmen in Madison.
Hi, I'm Bruce Wilson, also a selectman.
I'm Al Goldberg, selectman in Madison.
I have accepted the pie, we have accepted the pie in the face challenge to help raise money to build a new common room at the Life Haven Women and Children's Shelter run by New Reach in New Haven.
Homelessness is hard. We are trying to make it a little easier for these moms and their kids.
We are willing to take a pie in the face to build this space.
Please click on the link below to donate to this great cause. Please share and challenge someone else to make the pie in the face challenge. Thank you.
He got it pretty good.
Take two.
Gene, get over here.
program that encourages towns to adopt very sustainable actions. And as you adopt these actions and report back to the program, you accumulate points. If you get 200 points, you become a bronze-level certified municipality. If you accumulate 400 points, you become silver, which is the highest level of municipality. So Tom and I met with Woody, because Woody, if you look at the Sustainable Actions, there's several different categories, but in the Energy Efficiency Operation, what Woody and Bill have been doing has already got us a ton of points. So some of the stuff we've been discussing tonight is very relevant to this program. And so, we met with Woody, and we asked what his thoughts were on participating in the program, and Woody was very enthusiastic about it. So, we came here to talk to you tonight. So the steps that the town needs to take to participate are to designate municipal contact, and it would probably either be Tom or, or me, and we haven't, we've never finished that conversation of who should do it. And then, we also have to designate a sustainability team. And the sustainability team is obligated to kind of work on this project and ultimately report back to the Board of Selectmen annually. So if we gain certification, it's good for three years, but we only have between now and September to try to accumulate points for 2018. So in terms of sustainability team, Woody, Tom, and I thought smaller is better as the core team, and so we thought it would be me, Tom, and Woody would be a good team, and we could then branch out and involve, in a will, if you look through the actions that was right in your packet, it's going to involve a lot of different town staff, it's going to involve a lot of different town groups, but it'll be very cumbersome to always, you know, try to be, try to get everybody involved on the team. It'd be a lot better that we can meet more frequently as a, as a core group and pull everybody in. So, tonight's just for discussion, but I guess the, the hope is that if you guys just give the nod, that we'll be coming back at a future Board of Selectmen meeting with a resolution, and that resolution would designate the municipal contact and designate the sustainability team, and then we're off and running.
That'll be on the three.
The three sound perfect, so, yeah, that sounds great.
Perfect, good.
Thanks, Dave.
I think it sounds good. Um, Dave, I went to the website to understand the sponsoring organization, and it looked to me like it was perhaps some faculty people at ECSU.
Yeah, I can actually jump in there. So, the Sustainability Group, Institute for Sustainability, is run by Lynn Stoddard from Noel, and Lynn's professor there, and she has a core group of people, and they've, they've been working with our group, which is now being renamed because we had the Sustainable Connecticut name, that was our website. And, and when they decided to form this real Sustainable Connecticut that did more than just energy, we gave them our website name, and so, but we've known Lynn and I've worked with her for the last four or five years. She's, she's fantastic, and she's really grabbing onto this concept of sustainability.
Will they be providing us any resource materials to help us?
Yep. And there's a person that's been dedicated to it. I was just there at the CCM thing. She's who I've been talking to about what we can get points for that we're in the middle of doing and...
Any funding involved with this?
There's no direct funding. There's also really not a lot of cost to some of these initiatives, but there could potentially be some grant funding in the future.
So, let's do it.
It's a plus-plus.
Thank you.
I don't have enough to do.
You might want to take a few things, throw things off, Woody.
But your salary will increase proportionally.
Yes, indeed.
Double.
Number nine, discuss to take action to establish a temporary bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee.
So we had spoken about this in very broad terms a meeting or two ago, about a bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee. And thinking through it a little further, I think it would be good, probably kind of the path of least resistance for the selectmen to establish what's called, under our charter, Temporary Advisory Committee, so Temporary Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And that committee could be appointed for two years with the charge being to develop a bicycle and pedestrian master plan, engage with the community in these bicycle ped issues, and then kind of as a side, just keep the Board of Selectmen apprised of, you know, either grant opportunities for bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure or other promotional activities to encourage more people biking and walking in Madison. And so, I think the, the two-year committee would be able to easily get this job done within that timeframe. I hope that the temporary status doesn't leak over beyond that. But my hope is, once the master plan is ultimately adopted by the Board of Selectmen, that that group could become permanent in the future. It's just, this is probably the first step and easiest step to take. Right now, I'm going to point to Virginia Raff as one person that would definitely be on that committee. I have several other names that I'd like to get involved, and I know Virginia does as well. So what I was hoping is, tonight you could just kind of establish the committee as a concept, or, you know, and then probably working with Virginia, we'd come back to you at a subsequent meeting with a list of names that you guys could then vote on in terms of. But, so the committee would involve myself as a staff person. Virginia would be a representative of the Shoreline Greenway Trail, which is not going to be the only component of bicycle and pedestrian, you know, facilities in the plan, but it's going to be a major component. There's two people, a couple, Colleen and Sean Alexander. She was the woman that got hit by a car off the neck road a while ago. They're actually both on the Board of Directors of Bike Walk Connecticut, which is a statewide advocacy group. They'd be perfect for this. They're going to be on it whether they want to be or not. But they've done a few other local events, so they would be interested in participating. And then a few other people have expressed interest, Bruce Beebe, he's kind of from the pedestrian, but he's a runner on a standpoint. I have some other people that are into bicycle groups that could be involved. So I said a five-member committee here. I personally prefer a smaller committee because I work with 12 members of P&amp;Z, and I think it's difficult. You know, again, like everything else, we can pull other people in. I'd probably be comfortable anywhere from five to seven people, so I'd look to you guys to give me some guidance on that.
Dave, it wasn't clear to me whether this group reports to P&amp;Z or to the selectmen.
Reports to you. So the advisory committee to the Board of Selectmen, they would definitely work with each rec. They'd work with P&amp;Z, they'd work with the senior commission. I mean, they'd be working with all those groups to solicit input and try to get, you know, try to get their, their assistance. But it would ultimately report to the Board of Selectmen.
But the recommendation going to P&amp;Z?
The recommendation would go to P&amp;Z before, before coming to you. So there'd be a requirement that gets vetted out through the planning zone.
Does it go to P&amp;Z for their advice, or does it have to get through P&amp;Z to get to us?
No, just a recommendation. So it's not necessarily, it's just, I wanted the intent to be that the planning, because it is a bit of a planning function, but, you know, they can't create their own subcommittee. So I wanted it to be clear to you that the intent would be to, you know, planning zoning would be involved, and the document that's created would ultimately be forwarded to them for a recommendation. So if it doesn't pass, if P&amp;Z says we recommend denial of this, it wouldn't preclude you from passing any public tweets made to address whatever that concern was.
So I'd like a motion to for a five-to-seven member commission.
I'll make it.
Jean made it, I'll second it. Perfect.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Number 10, discuss to take action to opt out of temporary health care structure legislative requirements.
So the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing back in November pursuant to a public act that the state had passed, and the general parameters of the public act were that towns have to allow temporary health care structures, which is defined as a non-permanent structure, 500 square feet or less, that houses a person of, in need of health care assistance. And...
Was there a nickname for these things?
Yeah, they're nicknamed Granny Pods. And you may have heard Granny Pod legislation somewhere in the news. But the, the commission took a look at the legislation, took a look at our regulations, and as provided in the statute, they chose to opt out. And I'll read the reasons why they chose to opt out, because it's important, and they needed to state them on the record. So, the Planning and Zoning Commission held the hearing on November 16th, voted to opt out for the following reasons. Section 24, the Town and Madison zoning regulation, already permits, as a matter of right, accessory dwelling units to be located on a lot zoned for single-family dwellings. The new law is more restrictive than the current regulation in terms of square footage limitations, requiring that the person living in the dwelling unit be a mentally or physically impaired person, requiring that an unpaid caregiver must live on the property, and requiring that the structure be removed within 120 days of the impaired person vacating the unit. The Planning and Zoning Commission believes that the current regulations provide more flexibility for persons seeking affordable, handicapped, accessible housing close to caretakers and their family. The commission also believes that the requirements to enforce the provisions of the law provide an unnecessary burden on the municipality. More specifically, the zoning enforcement officer will be required to enforce compliance with the mental or physical impairment requirement, the unpaid caregiver requirement, and the requirement that the structure be removed from the property within 120 days of the impaired person vacating the unit, and this will take up unnecessary staff time and resources. So, punchline is, our regulations are very good in dealing with these situations. When the state took this up, they didn't analyze all the town regulations. Some municipalities don't do what we do. They do not allow accessory dwelling units by right. And so, for those municipalities, maybe this would provide an advantage to some residents. It just happened that it doesn't in ours. So, for that reason, I would suggest that you follow suit and vote to opt out if you're comfortable. I can always, you know, circle back with more information, but I think it's a pretty succinct, you know, issue.
Yeah, it was very, very...
Can I ask a quick question? So, was there an issue that precipitated us looking at this? Did something...
State law.
State law, yeah, so we have...
Or was there a town, I guess, more of a local situation?
No, it was not a local situation. So, there was a provision to opt out, and technically, if we really wanted to avoid these things, we would have done it by mid-October, because there was a date when they suggested you have to opt out or the regulations are in place for that period of time. We haven't had any applications for these types of things because it wouldn't make sense for someone to apply under it because our regulations are better, which is going to our normal processes. And I mentioned in the, in the memorandum to you that, forget the numbers right now, so far, approximately 16 municipalities have voted to opt out, and nine have decided to operate under the new act, and others haven't taken any action. We probably could have taken no action in this instance, and I don't think it would have made much of a difference, but philosophically, the commission thought that was, that was the best thing from an enforcement perspective, and they don't necessarily agree. There's a couple of candid comments about the state trying to force us into this type of, you know, zoning regulation, which really are perfect.
Is there, was this a unanimous vote on the Board of Finance?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Tom, I, I move that we opt out of the temporary health care structure legislative requirements for all the reasons illustrated by the recent P&amp;Z hearing.
Second. Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number 11, discuss to take action on calling the annual town meeting for Thursday, January 25th, 2018. At 7:00 PM in the auditorium of the Walter Shumpfson Middle School. The event will determine whether the meeting will be held on Wednesday, January 20, January 31st, 2018. Purposes of this meeting is to review, one, review the state of the town reports. Number two, review the five-year capital plan. Number three, receive the annual report of the permanent boards, commissions, agencies, committees, and the town's auditors reporting in accordance with Article 2, Section 2.1.4.1 of the town charter.
So moved, so, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number 12, discuss to take action on recommendations from the Democrat Town Committee to reappoint the following. Anna Judd, Bower Park Advisory Committee; Heather Crawford, Conservation Commission; Lisa Mixes, Economic Development Commission; Glenn Falk and Lynn Wetlands; Melanie Clark, Job Evaluation Committee; Stan Bungiero, Youth Services Board.
Stacy.
I'm sorry, Stacy Bungiero, Youth Services Board. Terms to expire 1-1, 2022.
Tom?
Yeah.
Just so you know, the EDC appointment for Lisa Mixes should actually be 1-1, 2023 as a five-year term.
Oh, really?
I've noted that in the minutes. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second that.
You have to move it.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number 13, discuss to take action on recommendations from the Republican Town Committee to reappoint the following. Holly Johnson, Bower Park Advisory Committee; John Paulson and Ted Rowan, also Bower Park Advisory Committee; Mitch Cohen, Building Code of Appeals; Ed Pellegrino and Chris Weiler, Economic Development Commission; Joe Mako, Employee Retirement Board; Robert Newman, Fireman's Benefit Committee; John Matthew and Dave Newton and Lynn Wetlands, along with Thomas Paul; Vince Dusak and Peter Thomas, Job Evaluation Committee; Joe Bonoski, Ron Clark, and Joel Miller to the Planning and Zoning Commission; Tom Carle, Janet Dowling to the Police Commission; Bob Newman to the Police Retirement Committee; Dave Akamoto to the Rockwell Reserve Committee; Bill Pigott to the Salt Metal Park Governance Committee; Jerry Cairns to the Senior Commission; Joel Miller to the Veterans Joint Advisory Committee; Tom Henson and Peter Pastore to the WPCA; and Tony DeWitt to the Youth Services Board. All terms to expire 1-1, 2022.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number 14...
Hey, Tom, just real quick, on, on number 12 and 13, do we know, are, are there individuals that aren't noted here, or is this, does this encompass all of the people that were up?
So, I'll actually answer that.
Yeah, let me help.
For the Republican Town Committee, I have received an answer on every person who was up for reappointment. There are some missing from the list because they do not want reappointment.
Okay.
The Democratic Town Committee was unable to get confirmation from, I think, four members, but I spoke with Amanda Mitchell, and she said that it is forthcoming. So they, if they do want reappointment, will be up January 18th.
I was just wondering why the lists were so different. Thanks.
Number 14, discuss to take action to reappoint the following unaffiliated commission members. John Lynn for the Historic District Commission, and Warren Hartman for Salt Metal Park Governance Committee.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
15, take, discuss to take action to appoint Donald, now, these are going to be all positions within Town Hall.
Okay.
Discuss to take action to appoint Donald Loslan to the position of Controller for a term to expire December 31st, 2019.
So moved? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number 16, discuss to take action to appoint Cheryl Kasper to the position of Assistant Controller for a term to expire December 31st, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number 17, discuss to take action to appoint Heather Noblyn to the position of Municipal Agent of Aging for a term to expire December 31st, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number 19, discuss to take action to appoint Robert Cookett to position of Tree Warden for a term to expire December 31st, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number 20, discuss to take action on the following appointments. Steve Solis to the Zoning Board of Appeals from alternate for a term to expire on January 1st, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number 18, discuss to take action to appoint Henry Greigs to the position of Municipal Historian for a term to expire December 31st, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number 19, discuss to take action to appoint Robert Cookett to position of Tree Warden for a term to expire December 31st, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number 20, discuss to take action on the following appointments. Steve Solis to the Zoning Board of Appeals from alternate for a term to expire on January 1st, 2019. Peter Riss to the Zoning Board of Appeals, alternate for a term to expire January 1st, 2019. John Dean to the Senior Services Commission for a term to expire January 1st, 2022.
So moved?
Second.